Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go ahead in 6:00 PM and get our council meeting started. We ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our imocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. For gracious God, we come now as humbled as we know how, Lord, we truly want to say thank you. Thank you for so many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us. Lord, as we approach this holiday season of Thanksgiving, we truly thank you, not only for Thanksgiving Day, Lord, but for every day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Thank you, Lord, for those people, servicemen, who are fighting in harm's way all around this land. We pray, Lord, for those who are less fortunate during this holiday season that we will lift up them, give them a helping hand. We pray now, Lord, that you will guide our tongue as we meet here tonight and what we do here, let it be done for the betterment of your people in this city, in this county. Now, Lord, be with us, guide our tongue, these another blessing we ask in your name. Amen. Madam Clerk, if you call the robe.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Meeting is called to order. Character trait of the mind is gratefulness, letting others know by my words and actions how they have benefited my life. And I'm sure that we all have plenty to be grateful for in this land that we live in. For approval of the minutes from the organization meeting from November 5th, 2012, public hearing and the City Council meeting, November 6th, 2012, we have a motion to approve those minutes? So moved by Counselor Boone, have a second? Seconded by Counselor Chambliss. All in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone like to speak on any item on this agenda? Seeing now, Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. My, uh, I have to call a brief with the place.
Yes, sir.
And if you do grant that, I would like to turn the microphone and the floor over to Chief Brown.
You may have it.
Thank you.
Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Over the past two years, we have not had award ceremony, and I'd like the privilege to recognize two of the officers here today receiving awards. At this time, I'd like to call Lieutenant Brown up. And your family, too, Lieutenant.
I get outvoted on that one, Chief.
I might get outvoted on that one.
Just let the record show, we have stage fright in effect.
For actions a little over a year ago, Lieutenant Brown was off duty, noticed a structure fire, and during that time, he saved a family from the burning building, and that was above and beyond the call of duty. Something that you hate to say you look forward to as a firefighter, but it's a great honor to be able to accomplish that, and these individuals have a great outcome from it. And being in saying that, I'd like to present the Medal of Valor to Lieutenant Josh Brown, which he has been a senior and well-respected officer in the Prattville Fire Department. Thank you, buddy. We sort of had a, sort of went into two years on the firefighter of the year, another senior lieutenant with the department over 20 years. And the thing about this is elected by the peers, so that's a great honor. Even me having that award before, it just tremendously means something. He's been, like I said, a 20-plus-year veteran, has done a tremendous job for the city of Prattville. He's an informal and formal leader for us, so that means a lot to have this type commitment from the department. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Williamson and his family to come up. An extended family feel light, and his family, immediate family is large, he has a B.
But you mentioned if the extended family wanted to come and, and...
Lord, if y'all want to come up, you can.
And even some of the extended blue fam, or red family?
Yeah. Come on, guys. Don't break all the...
If you don't break the camera.
There might be a couple that would break the camera of that bunch. They're probably saying it's me. Again, I'd like to also thank Lieutenant Williamson and being raised with Lieutenant Williamson. We came up together where we were probably the best football players up there at the time, but I know his family, I know his dedication and his character and what he means, what his priorities in his life are, and that sort of sets example for a lot of these guys around here. So, on behalf of the Prattville Fire Department and your peers, congratulations, Lieutenant.
Well, I have to ask, looking at this, did you ever have a mustache? Because this gentleman here does look like you, but you have a mustache. Okay. I'll have to say, I mean, I think the awards that we're giving out just then just shows the type of leadership that we do have here in the city of Prattville, not only this department, but so numerous other departments. But as moving on along with this report, try to keep it as short as possible. Governor Bentley sent out a request for a Christmas ornament from various cities from around the state, and fortunately, we have some very talented people here in the city of Prattville. Out of our PCA Performing Creative Arts, Kelly Cook and Barbara Simpson, they were able to make a Christmas ornament that will be hung, will be delivered tomorrow to the Capitol and hung on the Christmas tree there, and so I just wanted to hear about a good side of it before it gets delivered over there. But this was hand-drawn and painted by Barbara Simpson, so she ought to be very proud of that. On the back, it says Preferred Community 2012, Barbara Simpson. So that's just another highlight of one of our departments there, just the talents that they have there. And also, I'm certain there's a lot of people have come in, they've probably seen the Christmas tree as we get ready to start putting it up, have some lights that are on it now, but it's not quite ready for the lights to be turned on. But that, that's coming up November the 29th at 5:00 PM. I hope everybody here can, can be there for that. The lights, the events will start at about 5:00 PM, the actual lights being lit will be somewhere around 6:00 or 15, 6:00 or 6:15 on that. And also, the Christmas parade, my understanding is the whole council will be participating in the, in the Christmas parade this year. That's Saturday, December the 1st at 4:30. I think there's a small football game going on somewhere around that timeline, but I'm certain we still have a great crowd to come out to that. Also, not for certain, but I think that we will probably have a resolution brought from the floor authorizing the hire for our sanitation department. If you guys could move forward with that tonight, it would be very helpful. And I've, as I mentioned earlier to a couple or three of the department or counselors, how important this department is. If you don't have a full crew, you're not able to get the garbage picked up or the trash picked up, and so this has been a very difficult time of year with a lot of the leaves falling, and still you have a lot of the holidays, you have Thanksgiving coming up, and we just need to make certain that this crew is fully staffed, so if you guys can move on that, move forward on that, too. Also, we have, we do have Thanksgiving coming up, as Council President Wood mentioned, and because of the holidays there, Thursday and Friday, the city administrative offices will be closed. Sanitation will work to collect Thursday and Friday garbage routes on Friday, so if you can relay that to your, to your constituents out. But with that said, I just want to wish each and every one of you a blessed Thanksgiving and upcoming holidays as we move forward on that, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, we want to congratulate Lieutenant Brown and Lieutenant Williamson on their accomplishment, and we also would like to acknowledge all of our public safety officials, firefighters, city employees for the job that they do so very well. With that being said, we have a report on the status of city finances.
Provided everyone with a reports in front of you. The October revenue report is the first sheet. I'm going to try to explain this as easily as possible, but with October, we have a unique situation that we don't really have to deal with any other months. The October revenue for a lot of the accounts gets pulled back into September. That is because, say for instance, when you go to the store on September 15th and purchase, I mean, on October, I'm sorry, September 15th and purchase something, you pay taxes on that. Those taxes are due the 20th of October. Well, when you buy that item, those taxes are automatically due to the city, their portion of those taxes. For that reason, this tax revenue that we receive in October is pulled back into the previous fiscal year, and that will close out. Now, when you look at the revenue report, the first column will say October 2012, that's the actual revenue that we received for that month. The second column year-to-date, you'll see is less. That's because those revenues that were due to us since September have gotten pulled back into September. So that's kind of a very brief explanation of that. Everything is kind of running according to plan on the revenues, looking really good. You know, I provided the breakdown for everyone for the taxes, so you'll see that a couple of those are lagging as they have been, such as lodging tax. That should be picking up pretty shortly as the new tax, as new hotel opens up. The next sheet I have in the packet is the September revenues with the accruals made. You'll see on the previous sheet where it came out, and you'll see on the September sheet where it was added into September, and you'll see the end numbers for the year-to-date with the accruals. You'll see that we, for the month of September, for the 2011-2012 fiscal year, we had budgeted $32.3 million in revenue, and we received $33.6. So we actually received about $1.3 million more than what we had budgeted to receive. For the month of October, the base sales, the overall sales taxes were down slightly. That's kind of been the trend the last couple of months. We're hoping that that will pick back up with Christmas coming. The next sheet in your packet is the tax breakdown comparison that I provide everyone at the beginning of the month for the previous month's activity, to show you line by line where the differences are. Then the next sheet in your packet is the October expense report. This gives you a breakdown by department, and it shows comparisons again with the accruals. The first month, I mean, the first column is the actual expenses for the month. The second column will show that the payroll accrual has been taken out. Just to explain that briefly, the last payroll that we, the last payroll of the month is not actually paid at, I'm sorry, the last payroll of the year is not actually paid out until the beginning of October. So because of that, that money goes, it's not expensed until October, so it has to be pulled back in to the 2011-2012 fiscal year. You'll see that most every department is running in line. There was a couple of small ones, but such as the planning department is running a little, a little bit higher than budgeted where they should be in the year. That's due to a couple of large purchases that they had to make to get some projects accomplished, but that's within their budget. The next two sheets in your packet are the wastewater fund income statement and the sanitation fund income statement. You'll see that both of those are running in the black still. Wastewater brought in $148,000 more than it spent in the month of October. November, I'm sorry, sanitation brought in, I think it was $1,400 more than it spent. The next, the last sheet in the packet is a new sheet that we've, that I just started providing. It shows the bank balances for all the city's accounts, broken down by whether it was in the general fund, group health fund, sanitation, or wastewater fund as of October 31st. I'm going to start providing those on a monthly basis so we can have a trend of where those accounts are. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Any council members have any questions for Mr. Mosley? Ms. Chambliss?
Mr. Mosley, on the September unaudited, you know, followed you with the total revenue being higher than budgeted. Sales tax is much less than budgeted, so the money that made up that difference, was that one-time money or a mix of monies, or where do you attribute that?
It was a mix of monies. You'll notice like business license was $100,000. Fees were $400,000 more. It's kind of a mix, kind of all over the place. Property taxes were $200,000 more. It's kind of all over. It's not one particular item that made that difference.
But it wouldn't be any one-time type monies?
A little bit of it will be, but most of it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mosley? Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Let me just encourage each council member, at your leisure, I'm sure we all are still digesting needs along the way, so give him a call or go by when you think you need to discuss any of this, and I'm sure he'll be glad to go over with you further if you have any question. Appreciate it. Thank you. This time, we have any committed reports? Counselor Striplin? Counselor Brown? Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. The Leisure Services Committee met on November the 16th, and basically Drew went over with us the basic programs that are going on in Leisure Services. It was kind of a catch-up with me being a new chair, kind of a catch-up meeting where he went over what the basic programs were, our fee schedules. We talked about some controversial issues. We talked about the stadium usage at this time, and just some general ideas that we're briefing the committee. We also have had a staffing loss in that department where they have lost the athletic director, and so we will be looking at that position and possibly making some changes in that department in the future. We also talked briefly about the splash pad, especially going over the locations for the splash pad, and had some department heads there. I really appreciate the city employees who came out that day to give advice on locations, and we will be narrowing that down shortly and moving forward with the splash pad. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. The Finance Committee met today at 3:00 PM at a very good meeting, basically discussing the same financial statements that you have looked at today. We feel that the city is headed in the right direction, and very near the future, we will be meeting again to discuss financial matters and possibly doing some creative things the first of the year, but not moving too fast, but we are headed in the right direction. Thank you. At this time, we're going to our agenda. We have two items on the agenda tonight. First one is a resolution to appoint Jerry Chinap to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Counselor Starnes, will you read that?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustment due to the term expiration of Jerry Chinap on April 30th, 2012, and whereas is the desire of Prattville City Council to fill the vacancy to ensure to continue the board's operation, now thereof be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Jerry Chinap is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately and said term will expire on April 30th, 2015, or until her successor is duly qualified and appointed, adopted this 20th day of November 2012. So move.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passes. Number two is an ordinance to surplus two vehicles from the Fire Department. Counselor Boone, will you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicles listed below are hereby declared surplus of the Fire Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. 2002 Ford Taurus VIN number 1FAFP53202A208852, and 2006 Ford F450 VIN number 1FDXF46P56EB47317. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicles on govdeals.com and that proceeds are to be deposited into the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Starnes. This ordinance has to have a rule suspended in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Counselor Chambliss, we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Brown. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended on this ordinance and end discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Counselor Striplin, you have a resolution from the floor.
Yes, Mr. President. This afternoon during the Finance Committee meeting, we were informed that there is a vacancy in the sanitation department and would appreciate your consideration of filling this budgeted position. The resolution reads, whereas there is a need in the sanitation department to fill a vacancy for one full-time service maintenance worker, one, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, will not exceed $31,532 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the sanitation department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $31,532 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line items, sanitation enterprise fund, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, life insurance, health insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
Have a motion by Counselor Striplin. Do we have a second?
Seconded by Counselor Brown.
This resolution being brought from the floor was not on our agenda, therefore its rules must be suspended on it also in order to be considered this afternoon. We have a motion to suspend the rules. Moved by Counselor Brown. We have a second? Seconded by Counselor Starnes. All in favor of suspension of the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any discussion on this resolution? Counselor Boone?
Yes, I'd like to know if this is a new hire or if this is a replacement.
No, this is a replacement of someone that's leaving, not a new hire.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. This exhausts our rather short agenda for tonight. Anyone in the ordinance, we have any comments at this time on any other item that you'd like to discuss? Mayor, you'd like to make some final comments?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. We actually have Mrs. Chinap in the audience out here, and just glad to see her out. She's been a very hard worker on the committee that she's on, and we have quite a few people like that in the city of Prattville, and that is what made Prattville what we are today. But I do want to wish all of the employees and citizens of Prattville a Happy Thanksgiving. One thing I did leave out in my report is that in the Christmas parade that invited everybody to, Kelly Cook and her department took a unique way of finding a grand marshal for the parade, which was to put out, out on Facebook to, for somebody to nominate a person and/or a group of people, and the overwhelming majority on that came back as the, for the grand marshal of 2012, as the boys' under-11 soccer team, who is our newest state champions. Anyway, they have won the nomination to be our grand marshal, so I do hope, congratulate them and hope that, see each and every one of you guys at a Christmas tree lighting and the parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Striplin?
Just very briefly, I too express appreciation to the, all the personnel, especially the officers that were recognized this evening, and to all city employees for all they do all the days of the year. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
There will be a Streets Committee meeting on November the 28th at 3:30 in the conference room on the City Hall Annex.
Thank you. Counselor Starnes?
I'd just like to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and thanks to Jerry Chinap. I think she's served, what, 12 years on the, the board, so I appreciate her service. That's all.
Counselor Chambliss? Counselor Boone? Let me just take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I also wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving. We live in a land where we have been truly blessed, not only for Thanksgiving Day, but every day, so we want to take this opportunity, thank the Lord for blessing us each and every day. Thank you, ma'am, for the time that you've served. Thank all the city employees for what you do. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 4th at 6:00 PM. On January the 1st, we will be scheduled... On January the 1st, we will be scheduling that meeting for January the 8th. So everyone mark your calendar, since January the 1st is New Year's, I presume none of you all would want to come down here for New Year's Day, so we will go ahead and change that meeting. That meeting will be January the 8th. Now I don't hear any objections to that. With that being said, call for adjournment. Do we have a second?
Sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.